Good evening and thank you for coming. If I can ask you to please rise for the invitation and pledge your flag.
Close by our heads. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Please guide us during this meeting. Dear heavenly Father, we ask that you direct our thoughts, our words, and our decisions. We ask for your travel mercy and grace as we return back to our loved ones. And Lord, please keep your arms of protection around our nation and our leaders. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll have reading and approval of the previous minutes.
I'm with a motion that you approve this meeting.
Do you have a motion to approve that's written? Is there a second?
A second.
In further discussion. All in favor, please raise your flag. Motion taken. Thank you. We have no old business and we have some new business. And I thank everybody for coming. It's always good to see everybody out interested in what's going on in the county. So, thank you for coming. Wes, I think we're gonna move things around to that Ms. Petty?
Correct.
Have an early session. I've already invited her to stay for the rest, but she says she wants to leave.
Quickly.
Wes?
That would be good. Okay, so we'll start with Ms. Cindy Petty. She is seen on the agenda, however, it is RZ 23-190436. The location is 825 Buchanan Road. It is Cindy Petty from 553 Harley Trail Bar in Georgia. Requested rezoning from Ag, Agricultural, to RR Rural Residential. The parcel ID is 068113003. And the current land use for the large tract was agricultural. You'll see, it's just that little hump on the right side that the land lot cuts across. You can't hardly see the little dotted line, but it's only .187 acres, is that correct, Cindy? And it's part of the tract that's above it, okay? And Cindy's tract is lower.
What the trailer kind of slices in between there?
The landlot line and the road didn't line up sometimes. Somebody jagged when they should've jagged, I think, when they did the road.
Well, we've got the trailer in there, we were all still family and everybody was still alive and everything was supposed to stay that way. Now it's kind of, everybody's grown up.
So, the road access is 4 Mile Church Road. There is a zoning issue that we can find. Executive son is the applicant's request in the rezon, a total of .179 acres more or less on 825 Buchanan Road from AG to Agricultural to RR Rural Residential. The applicant's request in this single-family residential zoning to add to other property of the applicant at 068111-003. Again, in addition to this memo, hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's files and video recording and the planning commission's hearing included, but not limited to all witnesses' testimony, in order that this information be a part of the record and shall be available for the board commissioners to review. Is there anything on the presentation here that we want to review before I end with my recommendation? As you can see, the smallness of it, just 1.79 acres. Staff recommends approval of the rural residential zoning request.
Thank you, Wes. Because Petty, what would you add to what's been shared with us?
I got one bathroom, one be stumped, and one bathroom, one be scrubbed. Oh, one.
Makes a lot of sense.
That's all I got to add.
Any questions for Ms. Petty? Do you have a motion? Do you have a motion to accept the recommendation? Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. In further discussion? All in favor, please raise your flag. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
All right, we'll close that, RZ 190436, and we'll open a hearing on RZ 190401, Pickens County Sportsman's Club. Wes?
Okay, this is RZ 22190401. Again, I'll repeat this just because I need to. Pickens County Sportsman's Club, Inc., P.O., Box 822, January 30143. The agent is Stephen Griffin. He's here. The location is 831 Old Jones Mountain Road East. The rezoning is 10.21 acres out of a larger tract from Agricultural, AG, to Highway Business. The parcel ID is 010023. Again, proposed use is to change 10.21 acres out of a tract with the remaining 47.80 acres to remain agricultural and be used as an archery range. The lot size is 58.01 acres. The road access is Jones Mountain Road, Old Jones Mountain Road East to Sportsman's Club Drive. The... Making sure I cover all the places there. And then we have the slide presentation. As you can see, there are two tracks side by side and one, they want to join it with the property that is to the north of them that is HB, to extend the rifle range. As you can see there, the purple is HB and the blue below it is the agricultural. Now, the map on the right side is the cutout part of the 10 acres, 10.71, if I'm not mistaken. Let me make sure, 10.21 acres there is going to be cut out of the total of 58 acres. And that's what they're asking for the rezoning on. In addition to this memo, hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's files and video recording and planning commission's hearing, including not limited to all witness testimony, in order that this information be made part of the record and shall be available with board commissioners for review. The recommendation from this office is that the Highway Business tract of 10.21 acres be allowed to, the zoning change to Highway Business.
Have you covered it? Who's the primary spokesman?
I am.
And who are?
I'm Steve Kirk.
And Steve Kirk.
Chris Barrett, Justin Larch, Vice President, CROSO. We probably have a little more to add than Ms. Petty did.
So, you're the primary spokesman?
Yes.
So, we typically allow 10 minutes and we've got a number of folks that also want to speak, so we'll let you tell us what you'd like to share.
All right, I wrote this down so I wouldn't forget it, but we do appreciate your consideration for the application and the rezoning of the 10.21 acres within that 58.01 acres of property on the Ag. And that's about one-fifth of the total parcel. We're requesting a rezoning of sole purpose of adding a rifle range that will offer targets at multiple distances out to 500 yards on the west side of our property. It will consist of a small shelter, as shown, which is right behind you and it should be in your handouts as well, that will partially be buried into the side of that hill. We figured right now we're considering 13 feet down, which will also have burms on the right-hand side of that. Providing those natural burms and on three sides of the shelter, the remaining area, as seen over on the left-hand side, will be used as for burms and targets to the north of the club and adjacent zone property. The proposed use is compatible with the adjacent highway businesses, which is including the sheriff's range and does not adversely affect the joint adjacent properties from that end of it. Looking from the range, the sheriff's range is up to our northwest side, right there where the arrow is at. One reason for this request is the benefit of the members and the guests, of course, and our training partners. This range will provide an opportunity for marksmen to practice their skills and hone those skills out to 500 yards. It will be a multi-distance range. Competition, hunting, law enforcement, everybody's always trying to hone those long-range skills. Long-distance ranges are kind of far and few between in this area. And we at Pickens County Sportsman's Club, we have the land and the ability to provide this. And we feel like it's a vital asset to the club members, guests, and the community as a whole. Another benefit of constructing the new range is that we will allow us to reduce the sounds from our other rifle range, which we are now in consideration of talking with Mr. Landrum and some of the board members of shutting that range down completely, which is a 300. I think some of our neighbors will be happy to hear that. Obviously, we'd like to get to 500 in operation before we do that, but if we go that far and if you look at the next slide, actually, Chris has got it. You can see the 300-yard range, which is over to the east side of the 500-yard intended range. If we shut that range down, or even if we reduced it to just center or rimfire cartridges, which will be 22, that would immensely reduce the sound levels that are coming from those So, I kind of stepped over some of that by what we initially had planned to do, which was put in natural buffers and barriers. But by us shutting that down, that negates having to do any of that. Over the last 15 months, we've had, we've had a lot of conversations with a lot of people in the community. We've gotten with our neighbors. We've found out their concerns. We've had some handshake agreements. I think this goes a little bit beyond what we had initially offered. The Cantrells being the closest neighbor to us, it was very important to me to meet them and let them understand that we want to be neighbors. We're not looking to, we're not looking to make anyone upset and we're trying-
You want to be a good neighbor.
A good neighbor, yes, I guess you would say. But I, integrity and being above board is, to me, means a lot. And that's what I've stressed to them. There's no, there's no hidden stones here. Our spots aren't going to change. We want to open up a long-distance range, rezone that for highway business with the conditional use as it's in for the second phase of this. And we'll shut, once that's in operation, we'll shut that 300-yard range down. The communications that we've had with our neighbors, I think, over the last 15 months mainly, probably the last 10 months, have been pretty positive. I think they understand that we're, we're not out to just get something and go on, but they're looking for long-term assurances, and I get that. That's why I think shutting that 300-yard range down and not opening it back up is a way to go about that.
How many members do you have?
Right now, we're at 450 paid members. That's our cap.
How many young paid?
But-
Eleven life members and two honorary members.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, and then we, we have a couple honorary members, of course, they will have to fall in, and then we have some life members, which are 11. Mr. Schalak is one of our life members.
And who are the training, you've got training partners, who are those?
Most of them, we partner with the sheriff's office, for instance, the Gilmer County Police Department.
That the sheriff's got his range.
Yes, sir. Some of them, they're overflowed, but they don't have rifle ranges like what we have in the next area. We've always partnered with law enforcement. It's always been, they've always been welcome on property, whether it's a pistol range or whether it was a rifle range or whatever the case may be. When I say our training partners, that's where I'm coming from. We're trying to assist them where they fall short. And for instance, Gilmer County is looking to qualify some deputies and contacted us the other day on one of our pistol ranges that's far away from any of our neighbors. And they're, we're trying to adapt that so that they can come in and use our property.
So, you've got a good presentation here and you've added to that presentation, I take it, by your pledge to close the 300-yard range.
That was a little bit short notice, but we've been talking about it as to what the best thing to do and again, trying to be a good neighbor, trying to make sure that the folks in this community understand that we, we do a lot of good things at that club for you and ladies and it just, we do a lot of good things.
Who primarily benefits from a 500-yard range?
Mainly people that are competing, I wouldn't say. There, that's become a big sport over the last eight to 10 years, would you say, Justin?
Yes, sir.
That's probably the most important. Some people, that being a multi-distance range, you'll be able to not only shoot at 100 yards, but you'll also be able to shoot at 300 or 400, et cetera, from that standpoint. That's who would benefit, in my opinion, would be the hunters and the competitors.
Are there questions from the board?
You touched on this, the membership is capped at 450.
Capped.
So, what you're proposing is there's no increase in membership or?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And same shooters are going to be there?
That are on the 300 now.
Right.
Yeah, we don't anticipate any net increase in usage. The shooters that are using the 300 would shift to the 500 range. You know, there's a smaller percentage, not all 450 members enjoy long-distance shooting. Some people do just pistols, some do just shotguns.
It will never be open to the public?
No, ma'am. It's a private club. We have guests. Members can bring guests.
The only exception to that would be if there's an event or we're hosting a sponsor, what we call a sponsored event, which are few and far between, but if we do, like the sheriff's range, that's considered open to the public.
They told me what a sponsored event would be.
If we do the competition shooting, where there might be multiple shooters, sheriff's office using it, but it's invite-only, it's not, it's never open to the public, so it's members-only.
They can't come in and pay on a daily basis. It's more of an event that they're a guest for that day.
So, somebody has to die for somebody to get in.
Unfortunately, very much.
Took me three years, so, but-
Typically, see a attrition rate of around 20 to 25 members a year, and that's either through, they moved, they're not using it, or death, unfortunately, that we do, we have significantly older members in the club. The average age is 64 out of all 450 members.
And the club has become a social outlet for a lot of our senior members. They usually meet up there first thing in the morning Tuesdays and Thursdays are a big day for the shotgun guys.
Other questions from the board? What are you going to build that hood out of?
Probably, I'm thinking wood, six-by-sixes with just the raptor end of it and then the burms being around it. My thought process on the burms would be to overlap them with a walk space in between them. That's the easiest way to keep that sound deadening from that standpoint. We'll take the dirt from that 13 feet that we're digging down and width and we'll use that as a berm that runs along the right-hand side of it. Talking with the contractors thus far, we should have enough dirt to build an awful nice berm there from that standpoint. We kind of held off on doing much of the investigation of this until we got our zoning taken care of. There was no sense of spending money and time until we knew what we could do.
I know. If you've got steel metal poles around, you hit it just right, he'll come right around and come right back to you, so.
Yeah, yeah. Six-by-six post, I think is probably, and I assume this is what you're referring to, the Victoria up here and the, the biggest thing with wood too is it absorbs a little bit more than steel does, doesn't ring.
Is the area finished?
No ma'am.
How high are the burms going to be?
Usually, the average is 15 feet.
Okay, thank you. So, we've got some other folks. We've got some folks for, we've got some against, and we'll get to, we'll get to those here So, those speaking for for, I have three folks. And so, we'd like to keep this part under 10 minutes for all three, so Shane Grizzle?
Yes, sir. Really, the only, I didn't want to add much to his, I just wanted to say I am a new member, but one of the reasons we wanted to join, I mean, I've lived in Pickens County my whole life. I was actually born just upstairs here. And one of the reasons we wanted to get in, but one of the reasons we wanted to get in is, I mean, I have five kids and, you know, getting them into shooting is keeping them away from things that we really don't want to get them in. And adding, adding this part of the range is something that for me to do elsewhere, I'd have to leave the county, you know, drive further distances, you know, I mean, some of the stuff I'm going to get up to this distance is miles away. I mean, I know there's a club that's kind of close and it's got it, but most of them that you can actually get in are a lot further away and I would just like to see it happen just so we don't have to drive so far for the kids to shoot.
Okay, thank you. Our next person for is Chris Barrett?
Yeah, I filled that out because I was speaking with you, so I don't have anything to add.
You're covered. Thank you. And Justin Larch?
Same vote as Chris filled it out to speak with Steve, but you know, one of the big things, you know, this club, you know, that Steve was mentioning was by shifting, you know, all the 300-yard individuals, as Jim pointed out, no new members, the same amount of firearms, shifting them over to the other side, you know, would be definitely the sound. And, you know, having the ability to stretch out to 500 yards is a big deal for competitive shooters and also in helping to teach newer shooters about the ballistics of firearms. You know, I like to take my daughter out and my girlfriend out to shoot at different events and one of the big things is, you know, applying some of what my daughter and everything has learned throughout school as far as, you know, the trajectory and the drop like a projectile and factoring in math and everything. It's kind of like a real life physics experiment that we give them now. And I've felt that's a big impact from her life. She's, she used to look down kind of on math and now she's, you know, driving in math. I just, now I feel like having the ability to continue, you know, longer range shooting, that will be a great benefit not only to us, but to the community as well as to other members of the club.
Thank you. One more question, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Who is in control of the range during the times when y'all are active?
CRO is responsible, all safety, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
And then we have RSOs throughout the club.
What's that?
Range Safety Officers. The CRO is the Chief Range Safety Officer. We have Andrew Wilkens sitting right here, RSO. They are responsible for keeping things safe on club property.
We also have surveillance.
Yeah, we also, that's true too. We have cameras and surveillance, surveillance that we can monitor and track and backtrack. We can go back to well up to over a year as to what we captured on the field.
This is better surveillance than what we've got on the Mexican border?
Better surveillance than probably what most of Pickens County has. We are blessed with a, an individual that has provided us with some awesome camera and surveillance equipment that, so much so that I thought that we would give him a free membership this year.
So, during operating hours?
Yes, sir.
Someone is there managing and controlling all that coming to shoot?
If we're having an event, it definitely is. Now, as far as the club itself, it is each individual's responsibility to follow the range safety rules that we have, to understand the SOPs that we have. So, there's not one individual that walks around and polices the range. No, sir, there's not. But we have multiple RSOs that when they are shooting, some of them have three or four at one time.
So, so members have a key and can get in?
They have a badge, yes, sir. They have to badge in.
And a member could come in by themselves without anybody else?
Yes, 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 sir.
And your surveillance cameras are going to keep up with that?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. The only caveat to that is, is our youth. When we have our youth coming in, there has to be the members and the adults within that security program.
All right, thank you. All right, so that's our-
In front of the cameras, is somebody actually watching those all the time when there's not anyone there?
We can, just let me, I can pull it up on my phone right now.
Pull up our phones?
They want?
Pull it up?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we can pull them up on our phones and we do have our one gentleman that puts the cameras in for us and maintains the equipment. He's constantly monitoring. I actually called him the other day and asked him about a situation of target. And he said, "Well, I'm just sitting here looking at it now." And he said, "You know, answered my question." So, it's not a job, no ma'am. There are no paid employees doing this, it is all volunteer staff.
Okay, thank you. So, we're, we've now got, we've got three folks that propose and Mr. Cantrell?
Which one?
I'd take Lamar first.
That be it?
Come on, stand on up, tell us who you are.
Ron Coleman probably, who we're more prepared to speak on, or if I have his neighbor. I'd like to say to start with that Steve and I have been talking and I'd like to say that I really, I think Steve and I formed a friendship. I trust Steve, I've never questioned his integrity, excuse me. A lot of our concerns are not recreational. We don't, we're not here because we want to have fun and we want to shoot. We're not here because we want to invite people over. This is our livelihood. This is our everyday living. Chang was born upstairs and I was nine years old when my dad bought the farm there in 1976. We bought a farm, working farm, agricultural community that was there prior to the Sportsman's Club. And our concerns are not directly associated with what's happening in the now, but what's happened in the past and the bad behavior from the Sportsman's Club. The 500-yard range that's in question now was previously, there was a 500-yard range that was illegally installed and they were shooting on it. The Pickens County marshal had to go up there, take pictures, and shut it down. They were using property that they knew was not zoned appropriate for that tactic. There's also on their website where they offer free firewood to their members because of the forest fire. Most of you probably don't know about the forest fire. It was a self-inflicted forest fire on the Sportsman's Club. Whether it was tracers was what I heard, I don't know that to be a fact, but I do know that two weeks prior to that, the Georgia Forestry Commission came up and plowed around 20 acres of my dad's property that was burnt, that they ruled as arson. And a neighbor said he saw tracers coming from the Sportsman's Club to the property. So, that's neither here nor there, but we got 130 acres there that we've owned all that time. And if you stand on our property, you can look at their 100-yard range that's currently being used and there's a berm of dirt to catch their bullets. Over the top of that berm of dirt, you'll see a mountaintop, belongs to my dad and Ron Coleman. So, my children grew up on that property, walking on that property. They also advertised their ricochet shots on their website, where they chastise their members to try to not shoot certain type targets, not shoot shots that potentially ricochet. This is, this is our home. This is where we live. This morning, at 10 minutes after 8:00, we found shooting. And I wish somebody had done a sound study to measure decibel and- It, and, and I wish somebody had done a sound study to measure decibel in frequency. Four hundred and fifty people can shoot long ammunition. And if it was in your backyard, I'd question whether you'd want it there. And also, I appreciate what Steve's mentioned about the three hundred yard range, that is closer to us. But I asked Phil Landham a question, could the county police that? They're protected under statute law that says that sound ordinance in Pickens County cannot control that piece of property. But any lands that are zoned agriculture right now, if you make that part of that existing gun club, you won't be able to control that one either, if I've been interpreted the law correctly. So, um, Steve approached us, you know, and, and it all sounds good, but can Pickens County police them and say, "You agreed to shut the three hundred yard down, are you going to do it?" Maybe they won't, maybe they will. But I've got a lot at stake. My two sons on property now, on Price Street Road, my sister's currently building a house on Price Street Road, my mom and dad live there, I live there, and we have had to listen to this for a long time. And, um, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Coleman?
Hey, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak to y'all this evening. I own some property on Price Street Road, up the hill from the Cantrells, and I've got some notes here, but I'll try to be brief, because I know some other folks might want to talk. Our dealings with Steve have been ruined, and I've come to respect him and appreciate his honesty and candor. There will come a time when Steve Griffin is not the president of the Sportsman's Club, and that, I would say, is a concern that I have, um, as much as anything about this range. I understand that some have said that they plan to shut down the three hundred yard range, which I had not heard that before, and I deeply appreciate that, but in six months, they could be opening it. It'd be absolutely nothing anybody in this room or anywhere could do about it. So, I appreciate that, Steve's a man of his word, Steve's not always going to be following shots without finding intent. We sent a memo, or I sent a memo on behalf of myself and some of the neighbors, and hopefully y'all have that, I would request pursuant to, let me get my legalities out here, section fifteen oh one of the Land Use Procedures and Standards ordinance, that that be accepted into the record in this matter. I included with the memo a letter that I had sent to Steve, and I would ask that that likewise be made part of the record here. To kind of follow up on what Lamar was saying, touching back on the range as it currently exists, it is a nuisance legally, in my opinion. We can't do anything about it due to Georgia state law, and the concern we've got, of course, is that the situation's going to be exacerbated and worsened by yet not cranking. I understand that, uh, the folks like to go up there and shoot, and a lot of the neighbors, including myself, shoot occasionally in some of our hunts, but they've got up to twelve ranges already in use on that club, including one that's suitable for automatic weapons, pistol ranges, shotgun ranges, and other ranges. So, we're talking about another range at this point. Again, uh, getting back to the legalities, uh, under the Land Use Procedures and Standards, uh, the commission should consider whether this use would adversely affect existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby properties. The W is no fun, being out in my yard on a Sunday evening in the summer, having dinner with guests, and hearing what sounds like a war from one ridge all over. And that has happened many times. It has worsened over the years, I guess this club membership has increased. I understand club membership's four hundred and fifty tomorrow, again, if that club membership could be increased, it could be decreased, that's really not a factor that we can hinge a decision upon here today. That's up to the club, how many folks they want to let come up there and shoot. At least, and in February, standing in my yard, more shoot now than did ten years ago.
Y'all have two more minutes.
Let me, uh, let me speak briefly then, section eleven oh five, as the applicant has the burden in this situation, and we do oppose, on behalf of myself and the other folks who joined with the memo that I presented to this commission, it does affect the quiet enjoyment of our property. Cantrell's been here for decades, I've only been up there twenty-three years, but it's certainly affected my use. I do have a concern about the value of our property, I wouldn't want to be showing the property when they are shooting. I understand that some burns have been proposed, and we appreciate that, and I haven't seen many engineering studies or sound studies that show what the practical effect of them is going to be, and we certainly don't see that. And we're, we're certainly prepared, I think, amongst the neighbors, to talk to the club and try to reach an agreement in this situation, but as it stands right now, we do oppose the reasonably and the conditional use of the farm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Harold? Harold Cantrell?
Count, forty-five seconds.
Please.
You have about a minute.
I don't have any time.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Unfortunately, I'd ask my comment on that, it, we're talking about ten minutes as opposed to a lifetime for me.
I understand.
Extended amount of time. I bought this property forty-seven, little over forty-seven years ago, when, when the Pickens County Sportsman's Club, it was over, uh, I actually established a later date over in the AOC, uh, I don't know exactly what year they moved up there, but initially, it didn't seem to be too bad. But I've dealt with, um, I believe it's four different presidents over a period of time, at least one of which is, uh, uh, which has been convicted, I think, for felony not too long ago, uh, refused to even answer a letter that I wrote some time back. So, I do appreciate Steve's efforts here, and I feel like he probably would want to do the right thing, but I, I'm going to say, based on what I've experienced, uh, it's a, it's a one or two-year term, and he can be voted out at any time, I think he's probably done a better job than anybody that's ever been there. I appreciate him doing what he's doing, but, but I'm not, I'm not wrong, we don't know that he's going to always be there, uh, and I, and I'll say this, you would have to live next door to it to understand what I've been dealing with, or the complete length of time they've been there. Uh, I, I understand some of their members have talked about me pretty harshly, because I have complained in the back about the noise. I don't know what they can or will do to decrease the noise. Uh, I, I looked at the photographs there, and I, I appreciate that this way, that looked, may like to see anybody there and look to keep the noise level down. Tonight's the first time I heard anything about closing the one hundred yard range.
Three hundred.
Three hundred, uh, I appreciate, I appreciate that, that'd be, that'd be real nice, but I don't know how doing that would benefit the people on the other side of the mountain. And, and we have at least one person here tonight that, that's listening to me speak, and I don't want him to think that, that I'm in agreement with shutting this one down and then giving him the noise, uh, so, so I, I apologize for, um, him maybe, maybe at some point in time, having listened more than what I have. But I feel like before you decide to, to give a positive vote for this, that it probably would be the commissioners that would have to do this, but you need to ensure that you do have a legitimate sound ordinance that can be enforced in Pickens County. And every time I've asked in the past, that's not a vote. Uh, I know you people, I've read the paper, I know you've had to, uh, deal with wedding venues and all these things, let me assure you, wedding venue can't make the noise that Pickens County Sportsman's Club can.
Maybe some could.
Come up to my house, and we'll let you sit on the porch, and we'll see. So, with that, I'm going, I'm going to turn it back over to you. I, I would ask you, though, before you vote on this, ask yourself, before you make a recommendation to Pickens County Committee, if you would want this just outside your bedroom window.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, that's all the folks that we had that wanted to, that signed up to speak on that, which is number one. Any further questions from the boards?
Um, one that I had is, I think Mr. Coleman said there were twelve ranges on that property now?
That is correct.
Yes, ma'am.
But you're only showing two on the paperwork that we have.
The...
The one that proposed the five hundred and the three hundred.
Right.
If you go to our last slide, it shows the entire last slide.
But keep in mind that what we're dealing with is the property that is zoned agricultural, and the rest of it is on the highway business that is already properly zoned, including the three hundred yard range that we've been, made the incentive to shut down, that is on a properly zoned piece of property.
So, at this point, what you're recommending is that you're going to close the three hundred, which leaves a lot of them to open up the five hundred, which would be back to twelve again?
We'll have one that'll be the same range, but it'll be further, we'll get, be getting rid of that rifle range that is on the already zoned highway business property, moving all of that traffic over two to five hundred more on the west side down that alley, and we'll have more control of what we can do with the sound as far as the burns and the barrier.
So, uh, so the idea is not to increase the number of ranges, is to move the three hundred yard range, which now is, if, if one of the other views shows their homes in the same valley that that range is located in, so the noise from the three hundred yard range certainly is echoed, as we know, sound will travel through the valley, by moving that range to the west side, it'll be in the same depression that the sheriff's range is in now, so not only will you have two ridges between the range and their homes, but it's also in a lower depression, and the firing, uh, position will be thirteen feet down in the dirt, so there'll be a considerable amount of earth, uh, in the way between their homes and the new range, uh, which is in stark comparison to the current range, which is exposed directly to that valley. Now, there is a photo that shows the valley, um, and some, the blue lines indicate sort of the way the sound would travel to their homes today, and you can see the five hundred yard line, uh, ranges on the other side of that ridge. And, and I do want to make sure, uh, that the commission is aware, we, our rules strictly forbid any sort of hazardous material from being shot, we absolutely forbid tracer rounds, any incendiary rounds, uh, anything that could be hazardous, and the fire, I wasn't a member, uh, at the time, that was many years ago, and any, uh, any, any person that violates that will be immediately expelled from the club and be responsible for any damage caused. So, I just want to make sure that you guys don't think that we're still allowing that type of, type of activity with, uh, incendiary rounds that can start fire. Just want to make sure that it's on the record.
Okay, so, so we've, we've got a level of noise right now, and we've, we've had expressions, uh, characterizing some of your members with bad behavior. Bad behavior make game noise.
Yes, we're not privy to a lot of that, I'll be honest with you. What went on, I, as, as I told Lamar when we first met, I can't control a thing that went on in the past, but we control everything that goes on in the future. And what we've done is, as a board, we have set up disciplinary committees, we've brought the camera systems in, uh, we've got safety committees, there's a lot of rules and regs, per se, that probably wasn't enforced twenty years ago, that are enforced now, and happily, we've removed some of the problem children. I hope that's, sinks in how it should.
So, what, what's the largest caliber allowed today, and what's the largest caliber on the five hundred yard range that you would allow?
Justin?
Yeah, the, the current largest caliber is a fifty caliber, uh, and that's delegated or reserved only for, uh, one current range, which is the three hundred yard range. Uh, moving forward, you know, with, with the club's permission, we could easily drop that down to having nothing above a thirty caliber projectile, that way we're reducing what many clubs would refer to as a, a super magnum, uh, so thereby lower the overall decimals, uh, because when you compare, you know, fifty BMG compared to something like a thirty oh six, or something that's used for, uh, common hunting, uh, the disparity in the decimals emitted is approximately twenty BB louder, uh, I mean, a fifty cal is, is rather loud, I'm not going to admit that.
It's like a small cannon.
Right.
You, you can tell that.
Yeah, well, I've never shot one, but I've heard.
Well, there's, there's a lot of shooting that goes on up in the hills, there's no question about it, and we don't allow things like Tannarite and, and like Chris was saying, the tracer rounds and things like that, we just, we don't allow, we're a sportsman's club, we're not there, we're not a militia club, does that make sense? We're, uh, we're there for the sportsman part of it, and that's what it is, I mean, yes, guns are allowed, but we try to do everything we can to reduce that.
How, how, how do you make sure that downrange is okay?
Burns mainly shooting into, but I'll let Justin, uh, speak to that, being the CR SO.
So, we have the, the burns downrange, we also have a designated force of fire as far as the direction of the, uh, the aiming and, uh, shooting of the rounds. We also have cold range procedures, so that if, uh, someone has to, uh, you know, call the range cold, to go down so that they can adjust their, their target or replace the target, and also so that they can pick up any type of paper that may have been placed on the target area and take that to the trash, remove the target stands, place them back up. Once the, uh, the persons have returned from the downrange, at that point, they can call the range hot again and, uh, firing can begin. Yeah, so the, uh, the side burns are, uh, zone, are, the side burns are approximately fifteen foot high, uh, they're also fifteen foot on the rear backstop, if not higher, some of our, uh, backstops are actually, uh, greater than a one hundred foot, uh, for IBPA, which is one of the ranges that, uh, commonly used for, uh, for some of the pistol competitions. And then, any of the, uh, adjacent areas, uh, have to have their burns as well, so if you have a fifty foot tall burn, it's usually going to be at least three or four foot wide, I, I think it can be two foot wide at the uppermost portion, uh, and that encompasses, you know, basically half of a, a rectangle or a square around the, the firing position.
The five hundred yard impact area that we're so referencing, that is, the backstop on that is probably two hundred feet taller.
At least.
Though, we're loving that from the stand you're standing.
We have one of our gentlemen to do it for, would like you to come in?
Yeah, real quick, um, I, I'm in the real estate business by profession, I own Cantrell realty, and I can, he's talking about hazardous material or hazardous rounds. I can assure you that the EBD considers lead a hazardous material within itself, without tracers. Three members of my family have been showered with shotgun pellets on our property, working our fields, hoeing our corn, we've had lead shot propped on our field, and it's, that lead is on our property now, so burns, all that talk, um, they, they haven't contained their lead, so, uh, just want you to know that. I mean, all this talk about burns, what happens when you get a, a child out on the hundred yard range with an automatic weapon, which is video on YouTube happening at that range, when that child can't contain the, the gun coming up, and it goes over that berm of dirt, which is not a hundred feet tall, on the hundred yard range? There is lead that gets off that ridge, I can promise you that, and I could prove that with forensic science.
Okay. Further questions from the board? So what's before us is, and just to clarify for everyone, we, we make recommendations. We're here to establish the, we make a recommendation and the commissioners are the ones that actually make the final decision in terms of what, what's approved and what is not approved.
Can I speak to one thing that Lamar had brought out, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir.
That issue with the youth on a, on one of our ranges with an automatic weapon, that happened many, 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 many years ago. And none of us were even part of this county nor were we probably, and I've been here for 26 years. That was nipped in the bud pretty quick. There's no question about it, there's no room for that type of behavior. I was going to say, there's no full auto on that range at all. So why was there, that, that bothered us when we heard Mark told me about it.
Thank you. So what's before us, to remind the board, we're, we're considering a rezone from AG to highway business for 10.21 acres in this, this case. Do I have a motion?
I have a question for Phil West. Is highway business suitable for this? And highway business is where people are coming and going into stores and the public, and this is not a public range?
Correct, but that's the only designation that we have for the operation of a range is highway business.
And it requires a conditional use, which would be the next, your next rule? What you're voting on now is to change the, the land use classification and then the next, but they still will not be able to operate the range on that area until you then approve the conditional use permit which they have supplied.
Do I have a motion? Just for clarification, we got a motion, being the recommendation of the staff we move forward, and we then be on to the next discussion. Staff recommendation, those two are approved.
I will make a motion that if you move to highway business, this section of property, the commanders, I mean, to approve that part of this.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the recommendation of the staff which is change from agriculture to highway business. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from the board? All in favor, please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four in favor. And all opposed? Motion carries. All right. We now move to, we'll close that hearing on 190401, and we'll open a hearing on 190402, which is the conditional use request for an outdoor shooting.
Correct. Yes, Mr. Pettis, glad that she was first. This is conditionally used 22, 190402. Again, it's the same criteria, Pickens County Sportsman's Club, Inc., Jasper, Georgia, 30143. The agent is the request of rezoning that, that in rezoning the 10.21 acres from AG to highway business with a conditional use permit for an extension of the existing firing range. The parcel ID is 010023. And the change would be 10.24 acres out of the original 58.01, when it, when it becomes highway business to have a conditional use to operate that, that exists, the new firing range. Figure out how, again, the lot size is 58.01, down to 10.21. The applicant requests this rezone, as identified as 10023, to have the ability to allow the applicant to combine the 10.21 acres with adjoining property, our rezonage being extending existing shooting range. And this would be by conditional use. In addition to this, meanwhile, here by incorporated entirety of my office's files and video and recording of the planning commission's hearing. We're not limited to our witness testimony in order that this information we made part of the record and shall be available to the board and commissioners for review. Now, all of the charts and arrows and maps that went with it were already shown. Is there any that you would like to resee with this as far as the conditional use is concerned? It is the two, the 10.21 acres. It's just a little confusing, I'm making sure I haven't confused it anymore. Again, the recommendation for the staff is that the approval of the conditional use permit with the highway business designation for the 10.21 acre tract.
Thank you, Wes. Yes, sir?
My turn? Yes, sir. Hey, and I wrote this stuff down so that I would remember how important he says. Briefer. None of this discussion should be considered with the existing range that's already there. We are presently and as far as we know have always operated within the law and done everything according to the county zone. This admittedly is an additional range, there's no question about that. But we are in full agreement to remove a range that we admittedly do not have to remove because we are within the law to keep that range operating. We are literally taking that out in placement over to a further direction. Approving this is going to make the situation better, not inflame it. And that's what our whole intention is to begin with. I think Mr. Harold and Lamar understand that that was always it. Make it, at least make it not worse. I always said, I want to try to make it better. And that's what we're trying to do here. I can't think anything about the existing range as it stands. The shotgun ranges, the pistol ranges, all that stuff is in a highway business, conditional use, zone, piece of property.
That wasn't for you.
The location of this 500 yard would be, put it into a position to where it is much more of a rural area than what the sound is being headed to now with the 300. That's the long and short of it. We're going to shove that sound towards the sheriff's range, which is county owned on that state of the land.
So...
Any questions?
So y'all have a set of bylaws?
Yes, sir.
How do you establish those bylaws?
Well, we just updated most of our bylaws, mainly the board and so forth. We work on a lot of things like from that end of it. You say establish them, depends on what you're referring to. Whether it be discipline, or whether it be your actions, or the SOPs that we are required to adhere to. They're pretty strict.
So, yeah, so the bylaws, like, like most nonprofits are established or recommended by the board, approved by the board, and then ratified by the members. So it requires a majority of a forum of members in order to change the bylaws. We're currently proposing new bylaws because the ones are, that we currently have are far outdated. In addition to the bylaws, we have rules and regulations that are, that are, can be changed and maintained by the board. We also have disciplinary actions that are prescribed based on violations of those rules. These are things that this board has put into place to help guide and direct future board. I know that's a concern, we can't control the, the thoughts and decisions of others. But we can set a precedent, we're doing our best to set a precedent. That will be maintained by the club in perpetuity.
Well, several people have spoken favorably of you.
Justin.
And their concern is that you won't be here forever. None of us could.
He's talking in live presence. I agree with you, I understand what you're saying.
And so, so you've, you've made some offers here in terms of closing this too.
Yes, sir.
How, how do we put teeth in that?
I think...
On, on behalf of the sportsman club to live up to what you have offered?
In discussing this with real estate attorneys, we can attach an agreement to the deed. We can take that 300 yards, which will probably be the situation that we have to do, is take that 300 yard range, survey that section out of it, and attach that to a deed that says this range will not be opened back up on this part of the property. And anything south of that? Hey, I saw you looking, Phil, but this is, this is exactly the way it was fed to me from that standpoint, from the legal line. But the property just south of that 300 yard is agricultural. That's part of the buffer that we are not trying to do anything with. And that section is in line, first ones with the Cantor's property. It runs right, so they would never be able to, you could never put anything else in that area.
Phil? So I don't know that you've got the authority to put those conditions on property that's not for you. I don't think you can, the property that's already owned as being used legally as a gun club, I don't know that you can touch that. The only thing you can put conditions on what is the 10.21 acres of the property. And those, what they frankly agree with the neighbors or what they, or what they voluntarily place on there and they're changing the title, would be up and down, coverage to a pole, not a county.
So, so if we, hypothetical here, but just to keep everybody honest, if that's a good term.
Right.
If we were to say the conditional use, that it was contingent on the closing? Or if they reopen the, that the conditional use?
But see, Ron, and Ron called me, told you a little bit about this in, in your drawing. I don't know how you can stop them from opening up a new range on their existing property because they're zoned to do that. They don't have to come back in here for conditional use without it all, is my understanding.
Phil, could they make the recommendation that they change the zoning on this piece of property where the 300 yard range is, act to agricultural, or can that happen?
Yeah, but they don't, it's a good idea, but they don't have a survey to give us a legal to do that.
But is that a section that we can work on as far as?
Yeah, and, and I don't think you got to come back and run the planning commission and do that. I think you do that with what you propose, putting this covenant running with the land that can be endorsed by the Cantor's and the other continued landowners. They all, they don't give them all this advice. So going back to your original point about the conditions, Steve, and Steve's, what he has filed with you at 3.4. He talks a little bit about some proposed conditions that you could place, that I think you could legitimately place on this conditional use permit. Yes, he is, he's given this to you as, you know, these are already in place as our existing rules. They got the ability to change the rules without asking you, but you can make these, these rules that he spelled out of portion of conditional use. And then I think there was also, outside of what Steve has put in here, comments about restricting the, the size of the caliber of the range. And, and Steve has talked about it, but all I talked about was 3.4. The building of the burns also could be incorporated in here. I think Ron's got some stuff in what he's...
Yeah.
Yeah, Phil, page three of what Ron has...
Yeah.
We're, we're in agreement with exactly what Phil. We understand that that's, there's no way that the county can do anything to enforce anything on the 300. That's why we're voluntarily offering that up and whatever we need to do to make that happen from that standpoint. I think it's going to be better for the, the community all around, to be honest with you, because the amount of noise that the 300 puts out, you're basically diverting that away from where it's going.
Well, again, everybody, everybody appreciates the spirit which you have approached.
So let's group up, I will say this.
And I just want to make sure that the...
Long-term follow... I, I understand their long-term concerns. I, I mean legitimately. I, I would be in the same situation, I'd be asking, hey, I want you to put that in concrete. If we say it, we're going to do it.
Alright, thank you. Shane, you got anything to add?
No, sir.
Chris? Anything to add?
No, sir.
Justin?
No, sir.
Alright. Lamar? Ron?
I appreciate it. Sam Dolan once said, "A oral agreement is not worth the paper it's written on." But Steve, it is. Two years from now, at least, the chances are. Obviously, his philosophy is a little bit different about neighbors or sound or using weapons. If this board or if this commission, followed by the county approves this without conditions at the very least, y'all would be powerless to help us or we're subjected to more nuisance than we endure at this time. And we will be powerless because of due to law. The memo that I've submitted to the commission has a number of requested conditions. And you do have the power, if you're going to do this thing, that you have to attach proposed conditions to use in the property. I'm with Phil, I don't see how attaching something to a deed is going to work, but I don't do real estate law. So I do know that if there are conditions, at the very least on this new range, those would have a force of effect. And closing in the 300 yard range, somebody could get aggravated about that. Vote these fellows out of office, change those bylaws and open that range back up next year. So, you know, that's, I appreciate Steve's position and his good faith, but but it does not, it's not going to carry along. We've got conditions that we would request since the commission has determined to approve the rezoning to the conditional use of this property that is set forth in the one I would agree on, that has certain purpose. That's it. Oh, well, there is, there is one other thing, very quickly. Mr. Frick, you said, I was sitting with him. He lives on the other side of Jones Mountain Road, on the west side of where this new range will be. To my benefit, I suppose, if that range is on the west side of the ridge, and I'm on the east side of it, maybe I get some ammunition in the sound. Mr. Frick's going to get the sound. That sound does carry across Jones Mountain Road as well, so. I appreciate the sound abatement that might be achieved by putting this new range, or firing line of the new range on the west side of the ridge. There are folks who live on the west side there.
Harold? You're back on.
Thanks, man, look over at the page. If, if things don't look right, I know we do have an opportunity later to speak with the commissioners.
Then once you get paid.
Harold, actually, all the commissioners are allowed to do is review the record. And what they will do is review the testimony that is given today in front of the planning commission, but you will not be able to speak at the, that there will not be another hearing at the planning commission, I mean, at the board of commissioners. You'll be able to speak and publicly comment. You'll be able to speak and comment, but that will be after the, after they have made their decision.
See, but after they've voted?
Yes. The, the board commissioners will only review the record that's created in, in this room tonight, so if you've got something to say, you need to say it tonight.
I guess I'll pass and see what other approaches we can come up with.
But Harold's not permitted from calling Mr. Stansel and raising a question with him. He wants to.
Ms. Stansel is not allowed to consider anything in his decision, his analysis of this, of how he is going to vote. He is only to consider what is created tonight.
Understood.
And what's.
Understood, and the same for all the other permissions. But that doesn't prevent Harold from talking. Understood. Harold thought he was being muzzled.
What? I didn't say that. Oh, Harold speaks to you. That is, that can be construed as giving evidence that will influence what he has to say. So that's why I was saying that.
Harold didn't mean to get you in trouble there.
Well, I appreciate you asking him to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
But I'm cut off tonight, so. I'm just gonna have to say, I, I appreciate Steve and his efforts, but I think, I think it is a mistake to approve this for a conditional use permit. I think it's a, I think it's a mistake actually, not only to me, but to all the citizens of Pickens County to approve any neighbor with this, with this kind of situation unless they can keep all their noise on their own property. We've talked about adverse condition, property values and all that. I have already been hurt, and I will continue to be hurt worse. I, I don't see, and I, I've tried to do some soul searching on this. I don't see how in any way that another range even blew the door, it's gonna, it's gonna lay up there. I mean, I, I appreciate that, but I didn't, I don't, I don't see having that, I don't see having my property value at one beat. I hope commissioners will review that comment.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. These are thorny issues. I also appreciate the approach that everybody has taken in terms of making their points well made. Sometimes people get a little excited in this room, and everybody has, everybody has done well, so thank you all for that. With that, do we have a motion?
I have a question. We talked about adding conditions to the conditional use, and he proposed these conditions right here. He also said we could limit, they would consider limiting to a 30 caliber over a 50 cal or something like that. Or they, they're considering, they said that they would shut down the 300 yard range. Is there parts of that that you could add to that conditional use if it's shut down? Pending it being shut down, they get the conditional use, or is there something in there if they decide to open that range back up in that survey piece of property, that it would revoke the conditional use of the 500 yard range?
Again, I don't think that, I, I think the only conditions that you can impose address the property that's in front of you.
I got you. So we.
We can put any conditions we want to in the condition of use.
Okay.
With respect to the.
To the piece of property that's in question, not the piece of property.
Right.
Adjacent to it. Got it?
And that, that basically comes down to our word, that we're gonna do what we said we're gonna do, with the 300 yard range.
Up to and including removing the current target array that's at the 300 yard range as well as the overhang and the shooting benches at that location.
We understand that's a totally separate piece of property as far as zoning, and we understand you can't control that part of it, but we can. And bottom line is, it's conditional uses. You put whatever conditions you've got on that from that standpoint, and we're gonna adhere to it.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve it with the conditions of no shooting until an hour after sunrise, an hour before sunset, which was also in, Ron, and no nighttime shooting, no shooting on Sundays before noon, no use of tracer rounds or explosive rounds, and no, no caliber larger than a 30 caliber.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
No shooting on Christmas Day, no shooting on Easter. That's not in our rules.
Okay.
Will be. We're just not gonna.
No shooting on Christmas Day, no shooting on Easter.
Hey, anybody got a question about that?
I'm not wrong with that.
No shooting on Christmas, no shooting on, what else? No shooting on Christmas Day, no shooting on Easter. No shooting after, until after 12 o'clock on Sundays. We've already got.
There's something along with that.
Yeah, that's already there.
So basically, what Steve has at 3.4 together with no caliber over 30, or 30.
30 caliber.
Yeah, 30 caliber.
And then no shooting on Christmas Day or Easter. Is that right?
I, I couldn't agree with you.
Yes, that's exactly right, Phil. And also no tracers, no explosives. Yeah, no, it's everything, what it says right here in 3.
On 3.4 with the condition of those three things, no caliber higher than 30, no shooting on Christmas Day and no shooting on Easter. So that's the motion.
And the hours. Yeah, it's in the 3.4.
I would want to see a fence added to that so that people can't wander onto that property while it's in use to.
Well, there's no, there's no weapons or anything available to anyone that they could access from that standpoint. They could wander onto the property, and we've had people riding bicycles and stuff that came through the property after hours. But as far as somewhat, it's, it's pretty rough terrain, so people aren't out necessarily just hiking in that area.
It's also violent.
Yeah.
Bears, deer.
Bears.
But I don't, fencing that property would be a monumental task through those mountain valleys. Are you thinking for safety?
Yes. I mean, you know, if I get out and hike, whether it's their property or not.
They would almost have to wander directly into, onto a range, and they would be visible when they wander there, because we're not shooting through the woods. These are open ranges to where everything is visible, and at that point, someone would call cold range. But you've got to understand that there are days that you may not have two or three people on an entire property. There are days that I sometimes wonder if we have 450 members because maybe 100 of them seem to be using it. Now, maybe they're doing most of the stuff, but the fact is, is I cannot see how we could, not only financially, but logistically, put a fence around that entire property. That's 100 and something acres. And that's not the property.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we get a second? No, sir. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Phil, you want to read what you understand the motion to be?
So the motion is to approve, the motion is to approve the conditional use permit with the following conditions attached to the property. No shooting before one hour after sunrise or after one hour before sunset, no nighttime shooting, no shooting on Sundays before noon, no shooting on Christmas Day, no shooting on Easter Sunday, no use of tracer rounds, no use of exploding projectiles, and no caliber over 30. Is that it? Sound after.
Further discussion from the board? All in favor, raise your right hand. You have three, four. All opposed? There are two opposed. Motion carries. That would close hearing 190402. Any board comments? Again, I'll thank everybody for coming, and I thank everybody for probably conducting themselves in this meeting. Steve, a lot of people are depending on you.
Well, wait.
Oh, it is.
All right.
It is. Public comments? You're done. You got something?
I realize this is just a county thing and not a federal, but this is one more reason at the federal level to deregulate suppressors.
Good point.
And there is, I understand there is a bill being introduced to do just that. Now, it won't pass for the current administration, but this is one more reason to deregulate suppressors.
Well made. Further public comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion.